Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman David Broussard.
All ahead and say the Lord's Prayer. How far in the water of heaven?
Call me by name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rocon.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gossman.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Marquardt.
Here.
Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item is public comment. At this time, I'll ask you to please put your phones on vibrate. And the way our policies are, there's no back and forth. We just listen, and it has to be on an agenda item. Do we have any comment cards to speak on something on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. We'll move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of June 7th, 2022, which will publish on June 24th, 2022.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlin Lewis, and second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on our minutes of June the 7th? Hearing, seeing none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Representative from Blue Line Solutions LLC to address the council regarding a photo speed enforcement program.
Good evening. Thanks for coming.
Good evening. Thank you.
I have just a couple of quick comments. This has been a recent topic of hot discussion. What we're doing, because nobody called and asked, we're concerned about our school zones. That is the crust of this whole thing. What we would like to do, and we have a representative here from a company that furnishes those services, is provide cameras in a school zone only. The only tickets they would give would be when the school zone was hot, when it was time to be a school zone. The other benefit is we get cameras 24/7, because if we, God forbid, have to go in for an intruder, I need my officers to know if there's one perpetrator or three that we have to neutralize. So there's cameras 24/7. It protects our schools. The other thing is that they all come with an LPR camera. That LPR camera helps us track the bad guys. We find stolen cars. We find people we're looking for. So it was a lot of benefit for little money. And most of the catalysts, although we do get calls, and the calls that we all get the most for are school zone speeding. And Councilwoman Ledbetter brought us a nice presentation last week, a PowerPoint that she put together. And so the chief and I talked and said, you know, it's time to find some solution that everybody can live with. So what's out there is that it's a giant money grab. That is not what we're trying to do. So we asked you to come and give us a presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Actually, I appreciate that, Mayor, and I appreciate the council members for letting me come down here and give a brief presentation. And when I'm done, I'll be, we'll open it up for questions. I'm sure there's going to be a lot.
We will.
And when you're, when we're done, we've got books for everybody. So typically, when we go to council, we make sure that you guys will end up having a book so you guys can ask more questions. Because what I'm going over with you today is going to be basically broken down into this book. It's going to have the details of the program. Does that, if that makes sense to you? So again, you will get a full book of the program and layout in its entirety in here as well. So, and I go off the PowerPoint presentation. Keeps me online. Keeps me where I need to be. But feel free, if you do need to me elaborate on anything what I'm going through there, please let me know. Blue Line Solutions is a company that's been around since 2012. However, in 2020, we came into the state of Louisiana. And I say that because a lot of programs were currently in the state of Louisiana. And we came in here with a different, with completely different programs. So a lot of things I'm going to talk about, I want you to understand they're going to be focused more or less on not just the school zone, but a lot of differences that we do compared to some of the programs that were in the state. And I say that because there's a lot of programs in the state that really kind of gave the word automated speed enforcement a little bit of a bad name, because it just makes you think about several different factors, which I'll cover here as well. So we can turn to the next slide. A little bit, how are we different? If you can, I'm sorry. This is meant for me to click through.
I'll follow along. No worries.
Our primary focus is on school zone safety. That is number one thing that we do. We know that in automated enforcement, if we put something out there, just on a highway or something, it's going to collect tickets. And that's going to maybe help that little area. But we know school zones are going to be one place those kids are going to cross. And that is an area that we can impact greatly with a program like this. Click again. The technology is a lot different. The, you may recall, you guys had a van, I believe, sitting somewhere down in Lafayette, right? That was operating with a radar system. Not to get too technical with you, but there's a big difference between our technology and what Redflex was offering. We are a laser system. In other words, if two vehicles are traveling the same direction, and this is primary law enforcement's going to know what I'm talking about here, the way their technology was is sending blind signals out and not knowing exactly which vehicle. This is very specific, and that means something, because it actually holds up better in court, too. This sends a laser out, and it pinpoints a vehicle. So somebody's like, hey, that wasn't me. It was, not only was it you, you could see where that laser striking the car. Teeth in court. These are some of the topics that you guys may have heard about. So if you guys heard of ATS, the red light cameras over in Baton Rouge, they didn't have many teeth in court. And people will say, well, you don't have to pay them. Well, there's a reason they're saying that, because previous programs out there didn't do things the correct way in order to ensure that these things were taken care of. In New Orleans, there was no due process. They didn't include that in there. In fact, it was ran by public works at the time. You may have heard individuals calling you some money grab. And I'm just going through these real quick here. You may have heard them calling in a money grab. Well, in New Orleans, they lowered the speed threshold down to four miles an hour. Means they weren't giving tickets until it was hitting four miles an hour. And that's really low. So I get why, I get why they said those things, right? It was pretty, pretty true. And public information education, which is what I'm going to talk to you a lot about here. Our platform is meant to do one thing. It's meant to slow individuals down, but it's also meant to prove that we slow them down. We're going to actually show you results of a program that we put in place. Go ahead, click the next one. So our school zones. When you go through there, you're going to get three different warnings prior to even get a citation. The first one being a photo enforcement sign. The second one being your current signs that you have out there with your speed limits, right? And the third one, we put up a speed awareness display showing you how fast you're going. So we're trying to give everything that we can to the driver of that vehicle, okay? And that's before they get a violation, which they still have to be going above whatever threshold that the city determines. So we're doing everything we can, again, to ensure that we give the drivers enough notice to be able to slow down in those schools zones. Our goals aren't to write citations. When these programs go up, we put them up with a 30-day warning period on there as well, where we're sending warning citations out. Our goal is them not to find out that this program's coming just by getting a citation. Click the next slide, please. The bright lights images that I was talking about earlier, it's a laser camera hitting the car where it's going to have a lot of metadata that's meaningful more to the police department, because it's, it is really solid evidence. It's not something that anyone, including somebody who's a instructor, could even, could even get out of. It is what it is. It gets your vehicle. Next, next image. So the main focus that we do is not just the actual citations themselves. It's actually the education behind it, too. Is anyone, everyone's familiar with Click It or Ticket. Right, you see the campaigns that they do. This mayor's Click It or Ticket. The owner of our company, his name is Mark Hutchinson, and you'll see him here just a little bit in the video that I'm going to do. But he was actually, he worked, as the law enforcement do, many, many hours on the road. And he's had a knock on a few doors that changed his life. He's had some situations where he decided he wanted to do something more. He actually got into governor's highway safety of Georgia, and also liaison for governor's highway safety in Tennessee as well. And what he did was he helped bring the Click It or Ticket from a, from a federal, excuse me, a state level to a municipality level. Another, the goal was to be able to provide education just beyond enforcement alone, if that makes any sense. So what we do is we provide materials for the department, and not just for the department, for the school system as well. Whether we're going to send home flyers, we want to make sure that we provide education material about this program when it comes, before it even comes. We actually have these flyers that go out. And of course, before we do anything, we do a study. Those studies are really important to us, because they give us an idea of what actually is going on in those school zones. And I have a couple of local studies that I'm going to show you here at the end of this, of this presentation. But we provide these quarterly studies to show how this program is actually helping reduce speeders and change driving behaviors in those school zones. If you can click the next slide. We're getting approximately 92, or we're getting 82% reduction overall as a national average in school zones. We're getting into the 90s. Into the, if you've seen the first slide, it's 92% is our lowest. And we will reduce any school zone 75% of reduction in those zones. What you see here is just one of the examples of what we use to educate the public beyond, again, this isn't, we're trying to encourage them to understand that this program has one purpose. And that is change those driving behaviors, right? Next slide. The mayor mentioned here, we also provide an automated license plate reader within those school zones as well. So if somebody's going through there with a vehicle that has some sort of state Ebola list, or, I'm sorry, basically, there's an alert that comes through. The PD is alerted as well, whether it's an Amber Alert, stolen vehicle, those kind of things. It's all included in this package. So anybody going through those school zones, it's automatically going to notify the department that they're, that they've got to hit on what that is. Hit the next slide. There's no cost to this program. There's no upfront costs. There's no maintenance costs. That's a big one for the PD. There's no out-of-pocket ever. We're not here to charge anything for this program. In fact, we do all the heavy lifting on this program, too, all the permitting and all the contracting work as well. We do everything for the department. Hit the next slide. So what is the catch, or how is it worked, if you will? Because people are always asking that. Sorry, too big to be true. It's a 60/40 split, okay, from the citation. However, that sounds great. Well, Blue Line covers a lot in this as well. We have equipment installation and maintenance that we cover, violation of processing that we cover. And we handle all the court dockets that actually go to court as well. Next slide. When we get started, what we do is we put out these little, if you look at the top left corner, then you see that little box there that's called an Armadillo. Those are actually speed study devices, a radar unit. So we never want to present something to the council and say, oh, there's a problem, without actually showing you the numbers of what it is. I can tell you, over in Scott, we ran a few places over there, and we just didn't have any issues. So the program wasn't even warranted, because there wasn't any speed problems that they had that were significant enough. But when we look at these numbers, we don't just look at the overall numbers as well as far as how many speeders we have. We also look at the difference in numbers of those people speeding, say, 15 to 20, 21 over. We reduce everything down in that category as well. Our goal is not just to get speeders alone, but also get aggressive driving to lower those numbers down considerably as well. That is what we consider a successful program. And we have a lot of customers coming into place. We, in fact, we've, since I began here, they just started coming in pretty much left and right. You may recognize some of the people around you. And we're working in about every department around here, pretty much. So it's been growing faster than I can fly around the state to get to people. So it's been going really well. This is just an example of the, of some of the studies that we do. This is over in Youngsville. So in their town, they had a five-day total of 12,572 vehicles went through this school zone, where 3,237 were doing 11 or more in that zone. And that's just in school zone hours. This is kind of an average of what we see. It's not, I know these are big numbers, but this is not jumping out at us in anything different. Our goal is to take those numbers and drive them down. We're not here to collect citations and money. Our goal is to be able to take these down and reduce them as low as we can get them. That's our success story. A little bit about our company. When we first hit our 90% reduction, we had an all-hands meeting to celebrate on actually achieving something that we felt that was introducing a program to a state the right way. It's all about safety. That's what it is. Now, you hit the next slide. This is another one, St. Martinville. These are closer, so you guys know where they're. I put in a couple you guys might know. This is going through the main part of their town, 25, the high school, I believe, on the four lane, right? So 25,000 vehicles went through there, a little over 25, with 3,084 doing 11 or more during school zone only hours, okay? And we are working with DOTD to actually, because we're the only company actively working in the state of Louisiana as far as doing automated speed enforcement. And we're working with DOTD. And for state routes, they are now, and their policy requiring, that the company do public education information, right? Because they really liked our program and how we're putting it out through the rest of the country, or through the rest of the nation. So that's, there's a lot of work to do over there as well. And go to the next slide, please. So I've got a brief minute. This is a quick video that I want to play for you, that it's only going to take one minute. And this is coming from our CEO. Do you have the sound?
When I founded Blue Line Solutions, the mission was simple. That is to reduce fatalities on our roadways. Our technology is based on reducing the number of children that are injured or killed in school zones. But what we do is use data from the speed studies to determine if there's a problem. And if there's a problem, we share that information with the community.
City of Jefferson and Jefferson City School Board took a collaborative approach, working with community members, parents, and law enforcement agencies as we started the school safety program.
We want to make sure that our data can be validated to show that in every single school zone, we make a difference.
The school safety program has addressed our top priority here, and that's keeping our school students safe. In Phase 1 of implementation, it instantly changed driver behavior, reduced speeding in our school zones by 90%.
We've had an 82% overall reduction in speeders coming through our school districts.
25,000 fewer drivers are driving through our school zones.
We've seen hundreds of thousands of fewer vehicles in the school zones, which means they're driving around the school zones to avoid the enforcement.
This program has been a godsend to our city and to the safety of our children.
Our kids are safer today because we've implemented this system.
Mission at Blue Line Solutions is striving for zero. Zero crashes, zero injuries, zero endangered lives.
And then the next slide. So in closing, this is what it's all about. It's about taking somebody from a 30, bringing them to a 20. Somebody from a 40 to a 30, right? It's simple math. It really is. Our goal is one thing. It's a really, it's a really simple thing that we're trying to do here, and that is slow people down. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I'll open up the floor to the council. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt.
Thank you. So let's say we're having issues with the way it's reading, and people are getting tickets that they shouldn't be getting, because I've read up on all that stuff, too, that it happens. You accidentally get citations, and they don't belong to you. Do we have a way out? Is it easy for us to say, you know what? This isn't working out here. We don't want any more. Like, is that a difficult process? Or can we just pull the cord, and that's that?
Well, and to answer your questions, I haven't heard of our company having any problems giving citations that weren't, that weren't legit as far as coming from the PD. Now, there may be issues there that we can actually work out with the PD to make sure that those are corrected. But as far as a contract is concerned, for going, for a contract for the school zones and putting those up there, it's a two-year contract. So there's no out on this for two years. It is, it is a contract. And you can imagine, it costs quite a bit of upfront to be able to put these in books.
Right. And you guys cover all the upfront, correct?
We do, we do everything.
Okay.
Yeah, we're permitting to traffic engineers, DOT, the whole nine yards.
Okay. Got you. That's all I have for right now.
Yeah, sure did. And yeah, I think, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, the program. I think, once we read the book. But there's really no hidden gems in the process and the solution. But I think as an elected official and a council and supporting our police department who are here to protect and serve, we provide services of all and things that enforce our family, improve our families' lives. And protecting the kids has got to be number one on the list. And I don't see why we couldn't move forward with this and accomplish that goal. I mean, I'm not aware of an incident that happened in our school zone, fatality. I may be wrong on that. But if we can prevent one, it's a win-win.
And a little bit about, also, I just want to piggyback on what you're saying. So just kind of one of the things that the states are doing. Currently, we are operating in seven states, and there are seven states that are getting ready to open up. And most of them are school zone-centric. Virginia, in the last six months, came into this, came into doing programs just for schools. It's becoming, with law enforcement having some of the challenges they do today with being able to provide man-hours and manpower, something that's a force multiplier to put in those zones to ensure that there's coverage out there has been a big deal. And I see that wherever I travel, it's been a common theme.
Okay. Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
So I live near a school, so, you know, to me, this is almost a no-brainer. But I do have some questions. One, does the radar system or the laser system, I should say, take a picture of every car or only the speeding cars?
Yeah, so there's two, there's two things that are actually happening. So there's two, think about this as two programs, right? There's a, there is a, one program that's actually capturing the place of the cars for speed. And there's another one capturing those plates for the automated license plate reader for safety purposes, right? For crime fighting, if you will. So both of those are capturing those. The speed is capturing them for a short period of time, because really, it's just wanting the numbers, right? That's how we continue to run our reports, to show the reduction, right? So those are only captured for, like, I believe, 30 days. Yeah.
The second question is, does anyone need to review the violation before it's mailed out to a citizen?
Yes, ma'am. They're all reviewed by the, that's a great question. They are all reviewed by the department. There are things, so what happens, and kind of really break this down real quick. So what happens is we get batches that come in through the day. So we'll get a batch coming from all your school zones within the, within the city. And they'll come into us, and then we'll have processors processing. We run them off of inlets, which is the same program the department would call in place on in their vehicles. So we run them, we pre-run them for the department, and then they come back over for review. If there's anything we're not catching, like say, it's a county car that we don't catch. Our goal is to let them have full control of this program. So if there's something we miss, they can actually capture that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That they do get reviewed by the PD.
Absolutely. And then if someone receives a citation, is this reported to the DMV?
No, ma'am. In fact, these are civil versus criminal citations as well. So even if you get a citation, the only thing that you're looking at is the actual fine itself. Nothing's going to go against your driving record or anything of that nature. It won't go against your insurance, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
None of that, yeah.
And last question. Who sets the amount of the ticket? Would it be the city? Do we decide it's 500, 100, or do you?
You decide, and we suggest that they're lower, that they're a bit lower than your current citations.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I may have a question later, but for now.
Sure.
That's funny. Yes, sir.
I just want to comment on, not a question to you, they asked some good questions. I know speeding has been an issue since I've been on this council. Get a lot of calls about speeding. This looks like it's an asset to our police department and our traffic control. I'll tell you, like you said, Ricky, we haven't had a fatality that I know of yet.
Not yet.
But I tell you, man, I see people zooming through speed zones. Not to mention school zones, not to mention neighborhoods. Like Lombard Street where I'm at, there's a lot of kids that walk down that street to them stores and the snowball stand, and it's like, you know, no hope. So I like the idea of this being an asset to our department. That's all I have.
Councilman Broussard.
As an employee for the school board, it's a big, big, big asset for the school board. Walking, crossing the street, the ones that help them. Don't have to get run over. They're watching more. I'm looking at those license plates, and it aggravates the heck out of me. Those gray license, gray covers they're putting on those license plate. I have mine, why are they far visible? Does that camera catch that?
Yeah, we.
Man, it's hard to see the letters on those things.
Yeah.
Everybody should be equal and get the same fine as everybody else.
It does not discriminate.
School board are welcome, I think, this really wide arms.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Ledbetter, then I'll go to you.
I did bring the, the topic up for discussion at our last meeting. So, we talking about school zones now, do you expand outside of school zones into neighborhoods?
You know, that is whatever the council and the police department would like to do. We're, we're school zone centric, so that is our main program. Do we offer other packages that could be applied? We do, but I believe that I'm here strictly for the school zones. So, if that ever, topic ever came up, it would be by you all. So, again, I'm not trying to overstep where I'm at, but it's school zone centric for, for what I'm understanding here.
That's it?
Yes.
I'll call on Dustin, because he hadn't spoken yet, so Councilwoman Swier.
Appreciate that.
And then I'll go back, because I saw your hand up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ledbetter, I want to thank you for bringing it up last meeting, because, you know, it's really coming to fruition. I get called, I mean, North Lewis is right there in the heart of my district, and that's a four, that's a four-lane road. I get called all the time, complaining all the time.
As does my office.
So, now this, this guy's here with a great plan, I think something that will work. I say we just grab the bull by the horns and go with it, because, I mean, that's the solution, and we talking about safety to the kids. So, when it comes to safety to the kids, that's, that's where I want to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So, one more question. A lot of times, these devices need to be calibrated. So, what about calibration? I mean, do you have an issue with that? Is that something that, I mean, you would be responsible for doing? Or is that something that our police department would have to take on as an additional responsibility?
Well, first, I have to say, I appreciate someone who thinks that much detail, because no one, like, that's not.
I hear that, right?
We, we appreciate her too, but this is a common occurrence.
That is, that's an excellent question, and we take care of all calibrations. We, a lot of times, what's called the IACP, which is International Association of Police, which transfers to NISMA, and they're, they come out with standards for what they want to be done, and then the state usually has their mandates on what needs to be, how things need to be calibrated. We follow those states to a T, so we, we, that is all on us. We keep, make sure that they're calibrated, and, and really, for these cameras, more than, more likely certified. That is the, the term that we're using for that, yes.
Appropriate term, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Great. Yes, ma'am.
I just wondered, how far from actually in front of the school do you go? You know, is it just in front of the school, or is it within the block, or?
It, that is a complicated question, because it really, there's a lot of factors that come into play. When I talked about, we work with DOT, because we have to maintain the safety of the right-of-way. So, a lot of that is determined by engineers, traffic engineers, not, not us. So, the placement is, is a little bit out of our hand. We, we put it in areas that make the most sense, where you've got the most problems, but we have to do it in a way that's, that the DOT requires it to be for safety reasons, if that makes any sense. I, I don't mean to make that a complicated question, but it's not one where we can just go, oh, we want it right there, and that's where we're gonna put it, if that makes, you know, I'm trying to answer it the best I can for you.
So, basically, DOTD defines the space in the school zone where we're going. Because they're looking at the intersections and the traffic count probably in those areas.
Yep. To be specific, DOTD plus a traffic engineer would get together to do, they, they, again, getting really detailed here, but they, they get together to get these, they come up with these, these drawings and these plans of where, where it can go and how it should be, and then we have, you know, back and forth discussions, something before placement is done.
And I was just thinking about, some times back, I got a call from a, well, not one of my constituents, one of yours, but it was about the, the street that goes to Pesaw, how kids leave from Bank Street, and they take that Little Side Street, and right there, it's slow, there's a sign and everything, but of course, the kids cross right there, and they, and Bank Street is pretty busy all the time, and it's a lot of speeding on there. So, that was a concern of mine, that we, you know, where they're placed, in places where they need to be, because it's past the block from the school.
Oh, so it's out of the school zone?
No, not really.
It's still in the school zone?
Yes, in the school zone, but it's a block from the school.
We'll probably really rely on the police department to help us regarding where placement is gonna be to address your, your problems, right? Your problem areas, and not just stick it and hope it works, right? We want to make sure that we're getting the coverage that you, that you need, and the areas that you need it. Because we know school zones, some of them can be quite long, and you may have an issue a little ways down than you do over here. We, we get that. So, our goal is to, to find those locations, to find those problem areas. We do the studies on those prior to, I mean, we, we really, we emphasize on those studies a lot, because they show us results. But yes, we would want to make sure we put it in the right locations.
Councilman Swier, you had your hand up again.
Yeah, a question though. Will we have these placed at all schools within the, within the city limits?
You would have them placed in the schools where it made sense, and I say that because some schools, it may not. Like, let me, let me kind of elaborate here. So, I get schools three thousand or so many violators, right, per, per each, and then I might have some with only fifty, you know? Where it might not be as much. That doesn't mean we don't care about those schools, and we can address other things that we can do at those schools. In other words, using the, 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 your feedback signs, your, your speed awareness displays and things like that to help reduce those areas.
Okay. Next, so the last question I have, as far as penalties go, when you send out, when your company sends out these citations and they don't pay, how do you go about that? Fixing that problem, or is there a penalty added to it, or?
There is, there, of course there is. It's going, talking to people that do collections, they're like, if you don't, then it's, your, your, your percentages are gonna go down. The, the, what we do is, we send those citations out once a month for three months, before they go into collections, okay? When we're done with collections, we're hitting at the top percentage in the ninety percent range, as far as that, and then it would come back over to administrative hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm coming, I'm just writing. Anybody else have, yes, uh, I'll, Councilwoman Marquardt.
Yes, ma'am.
She beat you.
Do you get our input as to which schools have the problem issues? Because I have a school in my district that it's on two busy streets, so there's one on the side, one on the front. So, I would recommend having it on both sides of that school. I don't know if y'all do two on one?
We will.
Okay.
We're gonna take orders from the chief, and wherever, if you guys let, let the, him know what exactly you would want, that way, we have one central place, because that's where we are gonna go to, right? Every time, as the police department tell us where you want these. We're gonna, we're gonna do a lot of studies, right? We're gonna do a lot. I think I'm doing eighty-five in Shreveport, so if that tells you anything, it's just a lot of study. So, we have a lot of those to run out there. We would be more than happy to do as many places as you want, to find out, even if they're maybe even not so much as a problem area, we still want numbers. Why not take advantage of us for that?
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Councilman Broussard.
Not to overstep, but we have a lot of schools, even in elementaries, or going more and more in the parish, you know, big schools. Or you go reach out maybe later, if you don't mind, the parish president's back there, the school board's all here. But if you can, you know, if you can add another date.
Yes, absolutely.
Reach out, because we having a lot of elementaries up building outside the city limits. We have Magnolia that's right there.
Yep.
You know, we have different schools, so are y'all gonna be talking maybe if the?
Well, I definitely would love to, to speak to the parish. No, we, we're, we're so, I mean, we're, it's, it's just me, for the state of Louisiana, for the state of Iowa, and for the state of Kansas. I was in Kansas this morning, I'm in Tennessee tomorrow. So, I'm, I'm all over the place, right? But, but we're so, this has been such a fun position for, for myself, because this program is such a win-win. Everywhere I go, it's just been taking off. The, if you know, guys know Sheriff Blaise Smith from St. Mary's, he, he loves this program. We're looking to implement their Tarbon Parish is looking at doing fifty schools in the parish down there. So, we're, we're so, we're all over the place here, but it's been a lot of fun, and I would love to speak to the parish to, to, to talk to them, sure.
Mr. Broussard, I'm sure that our parish president and our school board super, and our superintendent of schools is gonna see how it works for us. I'm sure that they'll, you know, we'll just be the guinea pig. But I do appreciate both of them being here tonight, and thank you for that. We were talking before, and, you know, it's, it's a good thing that we're trying, but it is an experiment. So, you know, this is something that I'm sure they'll be watching, Mr. B. Jeff?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a process we have to put in our local ordinances to set this thing up. So, you know, we want to see that.
Yes, sir. In fact, I have sample ordinances to provide you, local ones, like Karen Crowe, which has already got schools established over there.
Good. That was gonna be one of my questions, was our next steps. You had something?
So, just a few things. I would, I would tend to believe from, from the statements that I'm hearing from you, that you had four more success stories than not-success on this program.
We have so many success stories, and, and some of them are really heartwarming success stories. To what you saw a little bit about that video there. When, when there's a fatality, we're, we're too late, you know? And they, they renamed, they named a program after somebody who, who did pass away in a school zone before we, our program was implemented. But success stories are great, but I think that if you ask my company, they'll tell you about the success stories we cannot tell you about, because they didn't happen, and that's our goal.
Right. So, in lieu of Ms. Ledbetter's comment about other areas, you know, I think this is strictly school zone oriented, and that's what we're here for, but I would tend to believe that by enforcing your school zone, you tend to improve driving behavior on the outside of the school zones. Can you expound on that?
Yes, sir. Now, we would have to do additional studies for, for all that, but you're correct.
I'm just visually.
You, you will, you're gonna slow down people all over the town. You're, it's gonna be kind of a, you're changing, you're changing actual driving behaviors, right? So, that doesn't mean just limited to school districts, that's no, that's where they know that there's actually gonna be repercussion, right? But the whole goal is to change those driving behaviors to where they're not speeding on the other streets, side streets or local streets, or even the highway.
That's, that's, so, just to expound a little bit, how, how much are you seeing success with the security around our schools with these cameras? Can you expound on that a little bit more?
Well, again, success for us is percentages. It, it's driving those, 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 those down. The percentages that we're seeing, and I'll tell you what, if you don't mind, can you click in?
I'm talking from a security purpose too, as well.
Sure. So, we, we, we don't really have a number for security purposes, because that's gonna be what, the others, the other file that I had in there?
Oh, the other one? Okay, sure.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
We can, we actually have done quite a bit of studies. Numbers is what we're, if, if you listen to Mark in that presentation, numbers was his biggest thing, right? It's what we actually have, the factual data that we can bring to you, showing you legitimately what we're actually doing. We, this, this chart, and I know it's very difficult to see, so you may have to zoom in on it, but that shows reduction that we had in specific, in specific times in each of those school zones, okay? The percentage of reduction. The pre-warning phase, we're getting reductions prior to even getting, we're getting fifty percent, a lot of times, reduction before even writing the first ticket. That tells you what our purpose is, right? And then, once we start enforcing it, our totals drop down considerably, and you can see every one of those school systems you see in there, if you look at South Fulton, is it in the seventies, eighties, ninety percent reduction rates? So, that's what, again, that is, that's our success, what we're able to do as far as change driving behaviors.
Further questions or comments? Thank you. I think it's right on point with what we talked about of, you know, school safety and what we could do. So, I know that we'll have more steps on our end, and the council will take it, and we'll discuss it again, I'm sure, and have some future steps, but I appreciate you coming, and I'm gonna call on the chief just for a second. Thank you again. I, I just brought you up, because we've been discussing this, and the company that we found seemed to do the most studies, seemed to do the most front-end work, that it was specific, specific to what you and I talked about. So, I just thought I'd get you up here.
You use that tool in your tool chest.
Right. Well, and, and our council member last meeting, and, and of course, I made a commitment that I would have it ready for this meeting, because it's one of the, the bullet points that you had on, on the presentation of which way do we go, and which direction do we go. I did reach out, Blue Line does have a good reputation outside of, I looked at both sides. You're gonna see, if you expound upon the negatives that happened when this speed enforcement stuff started many years ago, you get caught up in that, but you don't look at certain companies that, and like Blue Line, that, that come across with actually a success of reducing percentages, which lowers the amount of tickets it's gonna write. So, actually, its success gives them less money. So, what you hear and what you see from different articles all over the place is, is this a money grab, and, and that's not something that I ever want to involve myself in. I know the mayor feels the same way. It's not about that, it's about changing behaviors. It's what we do, and that's a part of why we have the traffic enforcement stuff. And obviously, our emphasis as a department has been towards major crimes. Our emphasis is to try to lower our serious crimes, and we've taken the efforts with our traffic division to go inside of our patrol division and, and help us with that. This type of program helps us, where you got a full view of all the schools that have concerns about speeders and, and those incidents inside of your school zones during school hours, where you're covering, you know, I don't have enough cars to put in every school zone, every morning, every afternoon, there's just, there's, we have a number of schools here, we all know that. This gives us an ability to cover every school, every school where there's a concern, and it's at no cost to the city, the residents. It's not a, an issue where you have residents that say, why don't you do this instead of doing this with your, with taxpaying money? This is not taxpayer money going to it. And their intent, and, and talking to, to Jay quite a bit about what his, his company does, it's all about increasing a percentage of people slowing down. It's not about trying to catch you with the, the speed trap stuff that you always hear about in different places, where it's hidden, and all of a sudden, you get a ticket in the mail. If you saw, it does a sign that shows you your speed before you get to the speed camera, that's gonna catch you. So, it's telling you, slow down. If you're still not gonna slow down, then you, you need to be ticketed. You need to get that citation. So, you need to be held accountable, because it's putting our, it's putting our kids in danger. That's what we are. We're here for public safety, you know, we, we prioritize our youth, because that's our future, you know? We protect everybody for that matter, but especially our children. That's, you know, Mr. Broussard drives a bus, and we know that, you know, that as an emphasis for everybody on this council, we all have kids in some way that it affects. So, I think it's a win-win. And like I said, when, when talking to them, my biggest part of takeaway was that it's not about them trying to hold the secret to catch more people, it's actually trying to slow down more people. I like that part of what the present, what the presentation was, as I looked around for different companies that did this.
Yep. Questions or comments?
Comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank you, Todd, for doing that. Some people don't do what they say they're gonna do, but you, you usually do, and I, I thank you for that. So far, I like what has been presented, and like I said, we need to go in some direction to cut down on speeding here in our city, so this could be a first step.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, chief. All right, thank you all very much. Good discussion. And we're moving on to item four A.
Public hearing for ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen, approving contract for general engineering services between the city of New Iberia and Domain Zabo and Associates, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana, and I think a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Any public comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, four B.
Public hearing for ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen, approving negotiation of cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Iberia and the town of Urwick, for use of their town jail to house detainees that cannot be incarcerated in the Iberia Parish jail, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana, a second by Councilman David Broussard. Anybody in the public here to comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Thank you all very much. Now, we move on to five A.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen, approving contract for general engineering services between the city of New Iberia and Domain Zabo and Associates, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana, and I think the second was by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item?
So, this, are we entering a new contract, or we just giving them a higher rate?
Uh, let me look. I think the rate structure stayed basically the same. Bo's here, though, but I'm pretty sure that.
I think it's saying something about we're requesting amendment of the hourly rate sheet.
Yeah, we.
I just want to know.
This is more like a housekeeping, because we had not got this approved in a while, and we need to. It's, it's, we're, we're working through, having contracts, and you'll see more contracts per each project as we go forward, as we do with our architects. That's how we're gonna start doing some of this with our engineering firm, but I don't think the rates really went up. I remember looking at it, and they didn't go up much at all.
Okay, I just didn't have the original rates to.
I understand, I understand.
Compare it to, so I'm just wondering, you know, I was wondering why is it going up?
Yeah, well, this is just kind of some housekeeping, that's something we should be doing. They have operated for a long time and done a great job for us. They've been doing our sewer system for years, but they've just kind of operated that it just continued, so trying to clean up our act a little bit, and we have ARPA projects coming, we have, you know, scrutiny from our auditors. So, this is just the right way to do it, that we will periodically get this approved, and then, again, on some projects, you'll start seeing, instead of just an hourly rate, we'll be doing a contract, like we did for the study for the, our sewer system in conjunction with the parish, where we brought a contract, and we used to not do that. The engineering services just kind of ran by the hour, but I think this is a better way that we know where we are, and everything's current, and no one can ask questions later and say, well, you know, you didn't, you did that for the architectural firms, you weren't doing that for the engineering firms. So, just a way to kind of get us all on the same page. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. And Madam Clerk, five B.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen, approving negotiation of cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Iberia and the town of Urwick, for use of their town jail to house detainees that cannot be incarcerated in the Iberia Parish jail, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Dustin Swier, and a second, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seen none? Oh, you don't have, no questions?
I was just gonna say for the public.
You, you had something, I could see, so I'm trying to, you know.
I'm not so afraid.
I can still, I can read those eyes.
No, I was just gonna say for the public, just, this is people that we actually, like, if a police officer is arrested.
Correct, correct.
We would actually not put them in general population, we would move them to this particular facility.
Right, and this town specializes in that, and we realize we didn't have a contract, it was just kind of a housekeeping thing in case that would happen.
And it's a reasonable rate of sixteen dollars per day?
Uh, it's a very cheap rate of sixteen dollars a day, yes.
That makes sense.
Don't, don't tell them. Any other comments? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Moving on to resolutions, six A.
Resolution twenty-two dash one thirty, authorizing the mayor to renegotiate the maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with Department of Transportation and Development for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item?
Does, does Public Works handle this?
Public Works handles it at a loss. This is something that the state gives us a mandate to do every year, and we have proven, when I got here, they told me, don't try, I did anyway. We spend a lot more money than they pay us, but we don't have a choice. If we wanted to not keep up these right-of-ways, we could. And then they look like hell, because the grass would grow, and the state said, we'll come cut them about once a year. We can't do that to our citizens.
Right.
So, we cut a lot of grass that is state right-of-ways at a loss, but that's just the way the game is. I mean, I can't get out of it, so.
Could it be, would it be more profitable if we contracted? Could it be, would it be more profitable if we contracted, that work out?
I looked into that, and no, ma'am. The way rates are and everything, because we constantly go back and forth and think about all the grass that Public Works cuts, the parks, the, you know, you name it. We have kind of looked at periodically, saying, "Well, could we find, you know, subcontractors to do it cheaper?" I'm not sure that we could. So for this work, like I said, we take what the state gives us, and we just say, "Thank you," and keep moving.
Okay.
Mayor, comment?
Yes, sir.
So this is actually one of those, one of those good deals that we give to the citizens of our city, because the state pays us to take care of their right of way, and we do it for cheaper than, we don't get the money we owed for it, but we clean, we keep it clean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a service to our citizens, because if not, the state would cut it once a year, and our roadways would look, you know, they'd be riding by calling our office every week to come cut the grass. So we do it at a loss, but it's just one of those things.
And people don't realize, dealing with the state is like one of the, because Hopkins Street is a state highway, and we still-
It's a challenge. I mean, it's the tail wagging a dog. We not in charge. I mean, the state, we get a lot of money from the state, we get our capital outlay from the state. We are reliant on the state for quite a lot of things. So, you know, you gonna bite the hand that feeds you, or you're just gonna do it? So it is one of those things that we just kind of say we're getting it and doing what we have to do.
Center Streets, Center Streets District 3, y'all sure make it look good over there. It's a lot of work.
We try. It's a long area.
Whatever, but it's making y'all better look good on our main entrance.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam 6B.
Resolution 22-131, accepting change order number 1 for the New Iberia Historic District Trails Project, grant number H014328, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts and documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Is there any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, Mayor, updating on this project.
All right. I will bring up David Island, and he'll give us an update. Good evening.
How you doing? Marlo, the project is mostly complete. We just have a few little housekeeping things to take care of, on the sidewalk and the things, and some of the dressing. But this change order sort of addresses a second part to the project, that at the time, a bidding came in higher, so we had to take this alternate out of the project. But the funding agent with the state started pulling some strings. A few months later, they're saying we could get some more money to help fund this stuff. So this is, everything is coming from the state, and we're just trying to find a way to do it. And this is why we're bringing it as a change order. This is for new lighting on the sidewalk in that whole area, and to refurbish an electrical panel that's currently there that was utilized for the boardwalk. It's shot right now, so that's kind of what this entails.
And that is like the boardwalk along the bayou?
Yes.
That's correct, behind George Rodriguez Park, going all the way to the shadows.
The concrete one that replaced the wooden one, that lasted over 20 years, but we got this grant money to replace it.
So, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so we are gonna put in this change order, are we gonna have to get this money from the general fund? Or are you saying that the state's gonna give us additional funds to cover this change order?
He gave us additional money, so-
He gave it to us already?
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure-
Well, in all these grants, you spend the money, and then you get reimbursed. But this is one that the money's coming. This is the same gentleman, Michael, who came to the, who funded the kayak dock. Came to the kayak dock, walked across, came back and said, "This all looks better than I thought it was." So we need to keep, we need to keep him happy. But he basically volunteered and said, "Hey, I realize that y'all didn't have enough money. We all know every bid we do with the inflationary times we end, the prices are coming in higher." He basically said, you know, "I like what y'all are doing, and I'll give y'all more money."
Okay.
So we said, "Thank you, sir."
Okay, I just wanted us to be clear that we're not gonna take this out of the general fund.
No, not on this one. Can't say we ever won't, but not on this one.
No, I know, I know, I just want to make sure-
And it's finishing a project that is gonna be well utilized, you know. Anybody else? Cool. Then if there's no more questions or comments, I'll ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, man. 6C.
Resolution 22-132, approving contract for professional services with Thompson, Luke, and Associates for engineering services associated with the replacement of the existing HVAC unit at the NIPD building, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, and a second by Councilman Marla Lewis. Is there any questions or comments on this item?
We didn't send this out to bed.
We got quotes on, well, not yet. The engineer is working on, he'll do the plans first, and then we'll receive quotes. And it's in the dollar range that we'll get three proposals. This is the front building, and no one asked me where the money was coming from yet. I'm gonna ask you next question. And it's a, you know, a good one. The money is coming from inside the NIPD budget. We feel that, you know, we go to new budget in November, we have been, you know, as responsible as we can. That building is utilized by the majority of our administration of the Police Department, as well as the new meeting center that we're setting up for all of our training, that all departments will use. It's the original air conditioner, and it is old, and it is janky. So while the PD has money in this year's budget left, we are taking care of some things internally with his budget, which basically, it makes, it's good, makes good sense. It's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of the PD budget.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 6D.
Resolution 22-143, accepting the financial report for year ending October 31st, 2021, as presented by Coater, Slaven, and Company on June 7th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and a second, Councilwoman Deedee Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seen none. Please vote your machines. Thought I was getting corrected. All right. Hey, Jimmy. Now we move on to property standards. 7A.
Brooke. Dr. Adele's outside. This is the first house.
Okay, that's actually my district.
Yeah.
Y'all want me to read it?
Yeah. Yep.
Read this at the State of Buildings located at 295 Camellia Street, District 5, in action, resolution 22-133.
All right.
All right, this house was on the demolition. I don't know if y'all remember all the junk in the front, but-
It's clean now.
With the junk ordinance, we finally got it cleaned up. So now it needs to be, I, I'm at a loss, I don't know what to say.
Is the owner here tonight?
Yeah, I do.
The owner here?
No, the owner is Amal Adele.
Yeah, Amal, that's the daughter. But I think he's here representing.
Is he owning the property here?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the daughter the owner? Is your daughter the owner?
She doesn't want that, man. I voted for her, and she doesn't want the house, she gave it back to me. Because she had too much to deal with.
Okay.
You see, y'all should look at this guy here as a genius. He can make a house, a beautiful house, look so bad. He can make the White House look bad. I'm telling you. It's a beautiful, solid house.
So, Dr. Adele, can I, I'm sorry, I should have-
It's okay. It's all right?
Can I interrupt?
Yeah, you can.
I think we ought to start out with identifying the house, and then hearing the report. Jimmy, if you could give us the report on what-
That's fine, that's what we normally do.
All right.
That is our normal procedure.
On my inspection report, I have the roof, the maintenance, plumbing, electrical service, the wiring. All need to be corrected. There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. Ceilings are coming down inside, there's water leaks. The back end, that's where the hot water tank was, you can see the rot and the termite damage. So it really needs to be addressed seriously. At our last meeting, Freddie volunteered to do a scope of work-
I did, ma'am.
And a cost estimate. Which-
Nobody asked me to do the cost estimate, I just did it.
Yeah.
And for those that don't know, that's what I've done for a living for 39 years.
He came into the office and about another job, and I gave it to him on 5/12/22. I gave him a copy of that report. That scope of work, and I haven't seen him since, till tonight.
If you were working for me, and you do that scope work, I would fire you the next day, I promise you.
Oh, well, that's fine.
I would have you fired. $1,500 for termite.
I'm sorry, I watch too much Johnny Depp. Yes, ma'am.
So, Dr. Adele, since this yard's been cleaned up, and you've, obviously, you or your daughter received notification that it's on our demolition list, have you actually gone into the compliance office to get a permit?
I can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry, I'm pulling my mic, is it on?
No.
Oh, the mic wasn't on.
Sorry about that. Okay, so since you guys have received, you've cleaned up the yard, but since you've actually received notice that we're gonna, we were putting this house on our demolition list-
Why?
Have you, okay, let me finish.
Go ahead.
Have you guys gone to the compliance office and tried to get a permit to start renovations?
Okay, what I want to do to this house is get the windows fixed, and the door, whatever it needs to be fixed, and make it a storage room.
So according to, according to Mr. Landry, they gave you the cost estimate on May 12th. It is now June 21st. What's the holdup of going to the compliance office to get a permit to get started with renovating this place?
We just finished cleaning that thing. The mayor promised me that day, that night, he said, "I will have the guy arrested." So me and my daughter, we walk into an ambush with two guys, machetes, carrying machetes one hand, and liquor on the other hand. And we didn't know that he was still there. He promised me that the guy would be arrested. Then Jimmy Landry comes in and put that sign, and tell him that this house is gonna be demolished. He said, "Can I take the parts off of it?" He said, "Do whatever you want to do." The guy told the police that. He didn't tell me that, he told the police.
Okay, so what's your game plan for this house?
My game plan is fix it to look like, I own the whole street now. Y'all meet me by the whole street.
Okay, so, Dr. Adele, I know you say fix it, but there's gotta be a timeframe. We cannot leave this house standing up like this. So how much time would it take you to go into the office, get a permit, to get started with renovating this house?
You need to tell the person, "Give me a permit for what I need to do."
Have you applied for one? Have you gone into the office and applied?
I've been in his office many times.
No, 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 I'm talking about with this house.
Yes, I did.
When did you apply for the permit?
I went by his office, he can tell you, "I did." And he handed me a scope of work that is supposed to be for a mansion. You know?
So, he did not come into the office to apply for the permit?
He came, no, he came in about a grass field at 638 Mulane. And I gave, that's when I gave him the scope of work. And I documented on the top when he came in and what it was for, and when I gave him this scope of work.
Okay, Dr. Adele.
Yes.
I'm not sure how long you guys have owned this property.
Yeah.
However, this property's in my district, and it has been a problem since I started sitting in this seat. Now, you are here saying that you're gonna do something, and so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna recommend to the council that we give you some time to come into the office, get a permit, and start renovations.
He needs to give me that permit.
Okay, you have to apply.
Okay, I will apply.
You know, you already know everything you need in order to apply. We've had this conversation several times.
Okay.
And on August 2nd, we're gonna revisit this. You have, and that's if everybody agrees with me. I'm gonna recommend that we give you an opportunity to revisit this on August 2nd. We won't tear down the house immediately. Dr. Adele, you've gotta show some progress, which means a permit and starting some renovations. This is a big problem in that community.
Direction of demolition. Y'all need to concentrate on building and helping people in their lives, not to demolish ours.
But you know what? We also have to concentrate on the health and safety of the community.
You promised me when you came to my house that you're gonna take care of all that corruption.
Okay, so, I've never been to your house, but, okay, let me say this, Dr. Adele.
Yeah.
We are also concerned about the health and safety of the community. So we cannot have houses in this condition remain standing up in our community. So, again, we're not in the business of demolishing houses. We want to save as many as we can, but if the homeowner does not do what they're supposed to do to make sure that we can keep the health and safety of our community going, then we have to take steps to demolish the house to make sure that we don't have a problem.
Put it this way-
So you are telling me, no, no, you are telling me that you are going to renovate this house. I would recommend to the council, we revisit this on August 2nd. This is June 21st. That ought to be enough time to get a permit and get you a contractor to start working on that house. Don't you agree?
I'm gonna fix it where it's gonna be safe for anybody coming in.
Do you agree that that's enough time by August 2nd?
I agree with you. It will be safe for anybody.
Okay.
Especially the criminals.
Okay, okay, all right.
Mayor.
Yes. We have various hands-
No, you first.
Dustin, you had your hand up?
I have a comment.
You can make a comment.
I can make a comment, and basically, my opinion, it's, there's plenty of times you have been up here, and it's the same old song and dance. And I understand it's DeeDee's district. I totally understand that, and she's gonna ask us if we're gonna, you know, support her or not support her on this, but I don't agree, honestly, I don't agree with it. I'm not trying to attack you in any way.
Yes, you do.
But, no, no, we're looking out for the betterment of our community. We're not attacking people, we're trying to clean this town up. And it's the same song and dance every time you come up here.
Why are you bringing me here? You're bringing me here.
You bring yourself here.
I do not bring myself.
You bring yourself here.
This has been attacked by criminals first, and then who's in?
You can sit here and say that all you want. All I'm saying is, I just disagree.
That's fine.
And I'm not trying to go against you. I just disagree with it, because it's the same song and dance every time he comes up here. And we need to start, we need to start proving a point and stop the madness, honestly. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, not a problem.
Mayor.
We had some, yes, sir.
And I don't wanna be, I don't wanna muddy the water, and I don't wanna play, I guess I'm playing devil's advocate. But where are we with the boarding process of houses? I know we talked about boarding in the past, and I'll just say what I see in the city, because I ride. There are a lot of properties that are boarded up, solid. Matter of fact, I have two houses boarded up, solid, grass cut. And so I don't get any complaints about them. Where are we with that? I just, I just wanna know, because it's not like we hadn't talked about boarding in the past. So where are we at with boarding?
We have never boarded up a house.
But I'm saying, even, even make, even making the resident boarded up, where are we with that? I'm not talking about us boarding it.
It's a temporary solution. Is it on the books? Yes, it is.
Okay.
Have we done that? No, we haven't, because it's a temporary solution. What we found was, you know, even the houses that are boarded, they're still not fixing them. And then it's just a matter of time, because nobody's-
But ugly meets cold, all right?
Ugly meets cold.
We got a lot of stuff in this town that-
But there are many times that it goes so long, it is not safe. In other words, just because it's boarded, when the roof caves in, when the seals start giving away, when it starts sagging, and you have other issues, then it doesn't matter at that point, because it's going too far. So, you know, the effort that we've made since we've been here as a council, and you've been with me from the beginning, we've spent a lot of money. We budget $100,000 a year. We're gonna do probably $200,000 this year. We have $450,000 worth of ARPA money that we have all agreed that is gonna do more cleanup. So if we're trying to build neighborhoods, then we are making a couple of decisions. One, we're protecting the neighbors who live by a house that infringes on their rights, brings down their property value, and that they have to live next to, all right? Because we're not living next to it, they are. So the first move we've made as a council is, we're gonna get rid of that problem. We're gonna clean it up. The second thing is, we want people to live here. We don't all want to represent an empty lot. We'd like to have every lot full, and we'd be full of people, okay? Because we're a community, and we're a city, and that's what we're supposed to do. But to do that, you gotta save the house, and you gotta make somebody live there. So if we boarded up every problem, then we'd still just be a ghost town. We'd be riding around and saying, "Okay, I'm gonna board." We have some that we boarded up, I've been the mayor for five and a half years, and some of you have all been with me that time. We have houses that maybe the second meeting or third meeting, because I keep track of this, that we boarded up. They still boarded up. So now we're five and a half years later, the houses next to us still don't have a neighbor. So now, we're five and a half years late, later, the houses next to us still don't have a neighbor, we still haven't made one, uh, improvement of a community, and so, we have to watch that. The reason I don't advocate that too much is we're gonna end up with blocks and blocks of boarded up houses. We're just as bad as we were before, was, you know, my take on it, but, uh, you know, that's just my opinion.
Have you seen some of the lots of the houses we tore down? 'Cause that's the same people that were supposed to be taken care of, now we got a forest in the middle, we got three, four forests in the middle of the neighborhood. So, fifty cent in one hand, half a dollar in the other. We got, I'm, I'm telling you, we got some forests in the west end from houses that we've torn down. So, what would've been help, better, the boarded up house?
Well, the God's honest truth, the God's honest truth.
Or the forest that's growing in the neighborhood.
The God's honest truth, neither.
I'm just saying, okay.
Yeah, neither, neither.
I'm just saying, so we gotta-
We're gonna have the forest, and then we're gonna have people complaining about that.
I can't act like I don't see it, that's how I am.
Oh, I agree with that, I ride around.
I can't act like I haven't heard it.
We ride around together, I mean, we both see it. So, either way, we not building a community. Either way, we not putting people or not coming in the neighborhood to live in the neighborhood.
Not to cut you off, ma'am, 'cause you know grasses are headed.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Six weeks to get a lot cut.
You know how much money we spend on it?
Then those grass turns into chicken trees, and now we don't cut trees.
We never cut trees.
Let's be, let's, just think about, you know, this is a complicated mess, these demolitions of houses.
It is, it is, any, any way you look at it.
It's a complicated mess.
Any way you look at it, no matter what we do, we, it's, it's not a good situation.
The ideal situation would be neighbor by the house remodeling.
Or the real ideal situation would be people kept their houses up and we, you know, it's, it's-
So, one, one thing I'll say is, um, and this is just my take on it, I would rather have an empty lot than a boarded up house because a boarded up house affects the property value of the other neighbor. Because if I am gonna buy a house, I don't wanna buy a house that's all half burned up with, it may be boarded up, but it's affecting the price that I can sell my house for. So, I'm on the side of, let's get it clean and hopefully people will cut the grass, but if not, that's what we're here for. We will have the city cut it and put it on their taxes.
That's what we do.
Okay. Repair the siding. Repair the termite damage wood. Replace all exterior windows, replace the two doors, repat, repair or patch the roof leaks, and replace or re, repair the porch. On Freddie's estimate, I come up with ten thousand dollars.
He would fire me, but that is legitimately, if you're gonna make the house livable, he's got a lot of work to do.
So, now I've got a scope of work and I've got an estimate. If he wants to come in and get his permit, he's more than welcome.
Okay, I got a question.
So, Dr. Adele, the ball's in your court.
I just, I just want y'all to remember, that's no electrical, no plumbing, nothing on the inside.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. So, the estimate would be higher if you had, you brought it up to code in all those areas.
Well, sooner or later, he'll have to bring it all to code.
Right.
But that's the point I'm trying to make. He's gonna put ten thousand dollars into it, and we still don't have a house that's repaired.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
So, at that point, what happens?
So, that's, that's Dr. Adele's-
Well, we have a safe house.
Well.
Because he's fixed the windows and the doors and, and he's fixed the roof, it's safe, but nobody's gonna live in it.
Right.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna live in, I own the street, I want that to be a-
You own the street, okay, well, good for you.
A storage room.
Okay.
I wanna use it for storage.
Okay, so, Dr. Adele, the ball's in your court. You have an estimate, it's up to you to go and get a permit, and this all has to be done?
Why he told the people to take my original?
Okay, listen.
Yes.
There's nothing I can do about that, but here's what, where we are today. You have to get a permit, you, when the next time Mr. Landry comes in here on August second, I think, August second, you have to know that you have a permit and that you're ready to start renovating this house, because if not, we're gonna have to vote in a different way, 'cause that means that you're not ready to move forward and we have to do it.
I'm gonna go to the court.
Well, I understand, but we're giving you the, okay. Um, but, I, I, I just want you to understand that.
After she finishes, we'll call it a day.
Every time I make a comment, you laugh. That is a shame, that's not professional.
It's not professional the way you speak.
Uh, our city attorney has a comment.
Yeah, I, I have two comments. One is, Dr. Adele, the councilwoman is your best friend in this room.
She's not, she was. She promised me she gonna get all the corruption out of that town.
Please give us something to work, please give us something to work with, she's really trying hard.
I'm gonna take the pictures that he put in and fix whatever he has on there.
Okay.
Okay.
And make it safe for the criminals.
Good, then, then we're all on the same page.
And I, I understand what you're saying about making it storage. I mean, boarding sometimes works, sometimes it doesn't work. The test is not whether Nate, the neighbors are happy, the test is whether or not the building's safe. So, if the building's safe and it's ugly, it's as far as we go.
Yeah, ugly meets code, I say that all the time.
But in some places, you put boards on it, the boards come right off.
Correct.
In some places, they put boards on them and they don't do it right. So, you know, that's the right way to, there's a right way to build anything and there's a right way to board up a house, and that doesn't often happen. But the question is, is it safe? And if this would bring this to the point where it's safe, then I think that's the minimum, to code and safe.
I would like to make a comment to those people who looked at that house. That house was not, was clean, that house was beautiful. And a criminal by name Dini and another guy, Valentino, moved in and did the, the damage to that house. I do not live like this, or I do not own a house like this. I clean my houses. What, what is it?
Um, any questions?
You making comments, David Do?
Uh, yeah, just hang on, you had your hand up?
I'll save my comment for the next round.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I just wanna clear the air real quick and I'll be done.
Okay.
The reason why I laugh, 'cause like he said, she's trying to help you.
She's not.
But you, you're threatening to sue her and bring her to court, that's why I laugh.
Yeah.
That's why I laugh.
You're asking about my education, by the way, I'm Asian, of course.
You can be educated all you want, but that, I mean, that's, that gotta, that's my opinion, I'm done with it.
Thank you.
So, just, just-
Councilman, yeah. Mayor pro tem, I'm sorry.
I think, I think the, the first statement Dr. Adele made was that he intends to board up the windows and fix the door and use it as a storage unit. He does not intend to big it back to Jimmy Landry.
I'm not gonna board that window, I'm gonna fix the windows.
Okay, so-
I'm gonna make it look like a house next door. You know?
If you, if you guys are willing to put a board of storage building in the neighborhood, I guess so, but I don't think it's wrong.
Miss Ricky, you, you're supposed to be our friend. You're not supposed to flip against us after we, we help you.
Comment, or you want me to ship them out?
Comment.
Yeah.
It's one of those nights.
No, you won't win.
Okay, is there any other comments?
Okay, so my recommendation-
You have a motion?
Yes.
Ma'am?
So, my, I, I make a motion that we revisit this house on August second, and we're looking for Dr. Adele to have a permit to go in and make the changes that are necessary for the house to become a safe place in the community.
I'm gonna be in August tomorrow.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote your machines.
Whoa, it didn't pass.
Okay, so our motion did not pass.
Right.
You can't-
So, is there a different motion?
Yeah, well, then we need it.
What is the motion?
So, so, Dr. Adele, see, this is the kinda stuff that happens, I was trying to, to help, but when you keep making these comments, then-
But make the motion.
People are tired of it, so I'm gonna make a second motion.
No, let him make the motion, DeeDee, somebody else, let somebody else make the motion.
Okay, well, I, alright, one of you guys wanna make the motion, 'cause here's the thing. My goal is to always help the homeowner keep their house. You gotta work with me, but when you stand up here and accuse me and say those things, and these council people have the collective power to override my decision or my recommendation, and that's what just happened. So now, we're gonna go to letting one of these guys make a motion to see what happens next.
Okay, is, is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion to demolish.
I'll second it.
On what basis? What basis? You're not an engineer?
Okay.
What basis?
I got a motion on the floor of our Councilman Dustin Swier and a second by, you second? Mayor pro tem Ricky Gonsal.
Thank you, Ricky.
You're welcome.
To Demage. Is there any discussion on this item?
So, let me say this, guys, um, so this is still in my district. Listen, um, I know that we've had lots of conversation with Dr. Adele, but I'm asking that we look at this as one individual house and we don't bring the past into this. If any other homeowner was standing here and I recommended to you guys that we give them another six weeks or whatever the timeframe is that we're talking about, normally you guys would go along with me. Let's not let the comments that were made distract us from doing what we normally do. We have a, we normally go with the, the councilperson's recommendation, and in this case, I'm asking that you reconsider your vote and that we put a motion on the floor to extend again until August second. And then, at that point, as in the past, if Dr. Adele has not fulfilled his commitment, we will move with a different motion.
Yes, ma'am.
When this house came up before, he had the opportunity to go get the permit. The mayor volunteered his time and his effort to go and help out, as he said he would. What happened with that? Absolutely nothing. So, at this point, to me, he's had his chance, he's not gonna do anything with it, except blame everybody else for what he has neglected to do. And I'm, I've just had enough of, of it, I really have.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Who cleaned up, who cleaned up the lot around the building, is anything, we had anything, we had anything to do with that or?
No, he didn't, I did.
Who cleaned it?
He did.
Okay.
And if he wouldn't have done it, 'cause we had the junk ordinance.
Right.
He hired the man that owned, that used to own the houses across the street that Dr. Adele bought, cleaned it. Loaded it in a dumpster and hauled it off.
Okay.
So, we were busy with the cleanup, that's how much information you know.
So, so, ma'am, he did, he did make progress with the cleanup, and that's where my vote is coming from. 'Cause last time we talked about the cleanup and we made progress with the cleanup, I'm not trying to show favor. I hope I'm about the right thing, I do my best-
I think we're all trying to be about the right thing.
-to be about the right thing and not be personal.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I voted the way I voted. To me, it was about the cleanup this time and the board up next time. Whatever, you know, whatever y'all decide.
That's why everybody's got a button, but I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so-
We gotta vote on the motion?
Well, we still have a motion on the floor to vote on.
Unless you gotta substitute.
We still have to vote on this one first, you make, you make a motion, you gotta vote on it. So, is there any other discussion, comments, then I would ask you to please vote your machines again. Okay, so now our motion passed. To demo. Alright, thank you. Moving on to seven B.
Revisit the state of buildings located at three twenty-one East Dale Street, District Three, in action, Resolution twenty-two dash one thirty-four.
Anybody here who owns this property? Yes, sir.
When I bought that-
Jimmy, uh, yes, sir. Yeah, I'm going to Jimmy next to tell us about it, then I'll go to the property owner.
Okay, the structure, the, the flooring, floor framing has been removed from the interior in two or three rooms. So, the structure is failing.
Oh, wow.
There's a lot of maintenance issues, plumbing, electrical service, wiring, all need to be repaired. Again, on May the twelfth, I gave this to Dr. Adele when he came into office complaining about a grass complaint. I have it, Freddie's estimate was ten, seven, about twenty-four thousand dollars.
To make it a livable house.
To make it a livable house.
That's inside?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought that was outside when I first looked at it.
Nope, that's the inside where they removed the flooring.
The flooring's gone.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Depp?
When I bought the house, I bought it from, I think he's a Senator Bo Acop. It was a beautiful house. That house, when they stole the wood out of that, they were trying to sell me the wood. This house here, all that came from the next door neighbor. And Mrs. Swier worked with them, he told us that the last time. He worked on that house next door, you, you told us last, last, last time, it's on camera.
Worked on the house?
Yeah. All that trash came from that house on this side, from the company that you worked with. It's on camera the last time, you told the-
That I worked on the house?
Yeah, you worked on the house, what did you do with, with the trash? You dumped it inside the house and outside.
Yes, yes. But we can, we can discuss that in a separate vote.
Yeah, ask him, how did the trash come in?
The mayor.
Yes?
You went out your way and you did, you, you went out your way, you never did this ever before.
I didn't mind doing it.
About, you know, helping him find out a price to do it, your contractor.
Well, it was more the scope of work.
You know, but you went out your way and go and nothing, nothing has been done. Not a board has been moved, the inside is bad, it's, it's terrible.
Why don't you ask him what was done?
What was done since we had the last, my motion is demolishing. That's the last word I'm saying, demolish.
How many houses you wanna demolish?
All right, I'm gonna look at a bunch you have, but mine right here-
You got three already.
This one's gone, demolish.
Yeah, I'm gonna board that house, put it for sale.
Yeah, well-
That's what I'm gonna do.
Oh, yeah, who gonna buy that?
Uh, somebody's gonna buy it, they'll buy it cheap.
Uh, we had enough talk, Mr. Mayor, you got out your way, you gave, you never did it on any other house. But you did it on this one?
I don't mind.
But, uh, he doesn't wanna follow a thing?
You demolished my house, my family house, you demolished.
Yeah, I know.
You demolished a mansion for me.
Demolish.
I promise you, I'm gonna fight to, to the end, I'm an officer of the army, I don't go there down that easy.
Other, other cities and other parishes are following our lead on what we doing.
You're demolishing my stuff because you are racist.
I'm not gonna argue no more.
That's what you are.
Demolish a house, my, my-
You are racist.
Let's stick to our houses, let's, let's stick to our-
Make a motion to demolish it.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to demolish, so I have a second. I have a motion by Councilman David Bruce Art and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any further discussion on-
It's always demolishing.
Is there any other further discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
My question is, uh, he said he would sell it, my question is, once we vote to demolish, he can't sell it then, right? That's the question, I guess, for the attorney.
Well, I can't sell it, 'cause he's gonna send me a note.
Well, whoever buys it's gonna have, be in the same boat, and our decision is our decision.
But he gonna spend twenty thousand dollars on that house?
Once we get the resolution from Aaron, it's recorded at the courthouse for demolition.
So, whoever buys it is gonna have the same issue that he's got. You can't sell it out from under the demolition order.
That's right, well, I know that, but it would amount to, I buy it, I demolish it, right? 'Cause it's ordered to demolish.
Yeah, he have to, they'd have to demolish it, yeah.
I don't want it, but whoever buys it, they'll be, they'll be buying a demolition order, right? That's what I'm saying, so, which would be the same thing if they buy it from him before we demolish it, they most likely would either have to demolish it to repair it.
I mean, they'd have to demolish it, yeah, yeah, I don't know that that repairs it, but, yeah.
Neighbor's next door, hate it, take it down, give him some relief. The neighbor's next door, nice house.
The neighbor next door is the one doing the trash.
Ten foot, ten foot from this house is another neighbor.
Yeah.
Neighbor next door is the one did the damage.
Now we keep telling you, don't buy 25 houses if you can't take care of the five you have at first.
Why are you in my houses doing that? Don't go in my houses.
Let's, uh, let's try to stick to what we.
Repair what you have.
Stick to the house.
Yeah.
One house at a time.
That's it. We talking about one house, and let's try to stick to that. I know what the Bruce Art, that's your motion. And, and, just hang on one second. Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, so there's no other comments. We got a motion and a second, so I would ask you to please vote your machines.
Oh, look how fast they were doing. Look at that.
All right, thank you.
There's gonna be three houses you will be paying for.
Madam Clerk? Seven C.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 906 Dr. Row Alley in District 5, in action, Resolution 22-135.
Is there anybody here to represent that property? This property?
No, I don't think anybody.
Okay, Jimmy, tell us about it.
This property has been cleaned.
Okay.
So my most, my recommendation is.
You making motions now?
No, no.
You might as well, everybody else is.
Just to remove it. Just to remove it.
Is to remove it from the list because it's been?
From the list.
I make a motion to remove it from the demo list.
Second.
Okay. Who's district is it?
It's my district, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We getting, we going fast. I know, we have one. You, you, it's your district, any comments?
So, uh, no, I think we removed it from the list because the work's already been done.
Yes.
We just need to make sure that it stays clean.
I understand.
That yard.
I understand. Okay, well, I wanted to give you time to comment because everybody's going fast. So I have a motion.
I'm not standing a thousand tonight.
Yeah, I have a motion. Who made the motion?
Ricky.
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion by the Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilman Brooke Marcot. Is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, well then, please vote your machines, but like I said, we.
That's my district too, Dee Dee.
I know.
Yeah.
However.
Well, that's why I slowed the train down for a second.
I'm gonna need you to slow down, because I think that's my district.
And I would do that for every one of us, because, you know, we do need to hear from the person that represents that district. But anyway, uh, seven D.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 416 Field Street, District 5, in action, Resolution 22-136.
Do we have anybody here to represent this property? No one here to represent the property. Jimmy?
Okay, this is a trailer on a separate lot in back.
Yeah, hang on one second.
Okay. As you can see, the tree fell through it.
Yep.
So it would have to be demoed anyway to put another one there. Nobody's, nobody's, I haven't heard from anybody since.
Well, I wasn't here, so.
Jimmy, wasn't there a guy that came though?
Yeah, he said he would cut up the tree, you know.
Yeah, he said he would cut up the tree and.
But he didn't do anything.
He hadn't done anything?
Yeah, I passed by there. It looks the same to me.
Yes, sir.
So we gave notice to the landowner, and he didn't claim it, right?
We gave notice to Van Vitor, Jason Olivier, our, our Berry Parish government, Gulf Coast Bank.
Yeah. And Jason Olivier, I think, signed for his letter. I think that's what Liz told me. But anyway, we gave notice to the landowner and to the, well, homeowner, because they were different.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward with demolition.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted you to get your.
I'll second it.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Marla Lewis. Is there any other discussion on this item? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
I had to move fast, pretty.
Well, I was just worried, you know. I didn't know, man, somebody was coming. All right, seven E.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 1355 Julia Street in District 3, in action, Resolution 22-137.
Is there anybody here, oh, hello, sir?
We're on the ball.
Uh, can you state your name?
Uh, my name is Suy.
Okay, and, uh.
Okay.
Jimmy?
This was a house that was burnt.
Okay.
All right? If you've noticed, he's changed all the windows, he's repainted a bunch of it. So it's my recommendation to remove it. It's secure, it's safe.
My recommendation, yeah.
Looks good.
Looks good.
I second it.
Thank you for doing that.
Success story.
Right.
We need some blue ribbons.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, that's what we really want. What I try to tell people is, this is what we want people to do. Take responsibility, do what they need to do, save a house and keep our neighborhood growing, keep our neighborhood, you know, vibrant. So, thank you.
And you live next door, right? And just purchased that? Is that correct? Okay, thank you for doing that. That's amazing, yeah.
Because a lot of people, a lot of people on the neighborhood complained before, you know, before I bought it.
Right.
After I bought it, I cleaned up everything in there, and Mr. Jimmy called me and told me what to do, and after that, I come in, get some permit, and go fix it.
I'm gonna get you to do a commercial for me. I'm serious. I mean, you know, that's, that's what we need.
That's what we're looking for.
We need people to do, I'm thinking about a little Facebook commercial and say, all right, this is how you do it. We really don't, people need to understand, we don't like to tear stuff down. We don't like to take people's property away and tear it down. That's not what we here for, but, uh.
It's when they don't do anything.
But when they don't do anything, we don't have a choice. And when they come up and argue and insult you, it just kinda says, well, they're never gonna do anything. Uh, can you spell your name for my clerk?
Uh, first name is S.E.U.Y.
Okay.
I had the most trouble in District 3 with the fellow before you, sir. You'll listen to me.
Yeah, hang on one second.
Thank you all lot for District 3. We've had troubles.
He made the motion, I second it.
We've, uh, we made, we had some troubles with some other people. We sure, you're breath of fresh air to help the neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood, and you cleaned it up real fast. We wanna thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Model citizen.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
Motion and a second, uh, I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
We're moving, right?
Correct. Yeah, to remove it.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
I'm gonna call that guy, man. All right, seven F.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 317 Pershing Street, District 5, in action, Resolution 22-138.
Is anyone here to represent this property? All right, Jimmy?
James.
Okay, they bought a permit, and if you can see in the pictures, they've removed the roof, and on, on the side, they've removed some of the siding, so they've started the process.
Poor guy's been waiting to get his thumb drive back. He was kinda trapped here. I thought he was just enjoying our meeting, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so where are we?
So this is my district again.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is a tricky one, because, um, they actually have started doing some of the work, but it is slow going.
Very slow.
I mean, this has been in this condition for the last few months, uh, since they started this. It is extremely slow going. It's, I saw one of the people that owns this property, one of the heirs, literally sitting on that porch, and it looks like that the, uh, second floor is about to fall in on him. And, I mean, it's just, this is a tough one. I, I must say that, um, when I think about this property and the fact that it's taken so long, I'm, I'm recommending that we go with option two, that we give them 30 more days, because we need this thing to come down. And, um, if not, then I think we have to step in, because this has been going on for a long, long time. So, again, it's a tricky one, because they, they have started the work, it's just, it's taking them so long to get the work done, and it's a very unsafe structure.
That's what my concern is.
Yeah.
Hurt on it, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second your motion.
So we have a motion to revisit in 30 days? That's.
No, yes, I'm sorry. 30 days to demolish, or the city will proceed with demolition, which is option two.
All right, all right, I got you. So, so it's demolish, or they have to act in 30 days, or it will be demolished?
Yes.
Not coming by the council?
I'm sorry?
It's not coming before the council.
Yeah, if they, if they don't act in 30 days, we just tear it down. Je, uh, Jeff?
Sounds like we're voting to demolish.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm making sure.
We're giving them 30 days to do it.
To do it.
That's correct.
That's exactly what we're doing.
That's exactly what we're doing.
But I wanna make sure everybody, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. I said option two, I should have been specific.
I know, but we haven't, we haven't said that in a while. That's what it is, but I want everybody to understand what we're doing.
So let me, let me state, state the motion again.
Yes, please.
I'm, um, actually making a motion that we give the owner 30 days to demolish, or the city will proceed with the demolition of this property, because it is an unsafe, unsafe structure.
Okay, now I'll second it again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, a second by Councilman Marla Lewis, and is there any other discussion?
One question.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, so Dee Dee, 30 days, I mean, if they go and take off 50 boards, 60 boards, it's gotta be cleaned, demolished, gone, right?
Yes, we're saying it has to be demolished in the next 30 days.
All right. I just wanna make them tear half of it down, and you say, oh, they, you know.
That's good, but that's why we discussed.
I'll tell you what, if they tear down half, it's gonna fall on one of them.
Yeah.
So I'm serious, it is definitely.
It's a safety issue.
I'm not even, I'm not even a demolition or guy.
I ride by all the time.
And I saw, I passed there yesterday, and they were sitting under that.
I don't know how it's still up.
Well, they went to school, my mother, my dad.
I passed there one day, and he was taking the side and off the side, at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just want to tell them, and I will go tell them, as a friend of the family, y'all, y'all need to be careful, because they're sitting under that stoop.
Yes.
Ten half of the side down, and they sit.
I pass by there, and I'm like, they need to get off that pole.
Can somebody send a letter and let them know it's not safe to sit under there?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't believe it when I saw him sitting there.
It's not our.
That's just an accident waiting to happen.
All right, I'm good.
Okay.
So that's my motion, and thank you for the second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, seven G.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 608 Providence Street, District 5, in action, Resolution 22-139.
Do we have anybody to represent this property?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. Come on up. Come on up, sir.
Hello.
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 Okay, it's on the ground.
On the ground.
It's on the ground. It's progress.
So.
Any more donations?
My recommendation is gonna be to revisit August the 2nd. Which will get, which will give him time to finish cleaning up what's there.
They can have the wood.
He's trying to give it away now.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh.
Okay, so this is my district again.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for taking the house down, because it was a very unsafe structure, and we appreciate that. Maybe we should put a sign saying you can have the wood. But I would say, and we revisit on August 2nd to make sure that the, the yard has been clean. Does that give you enough time to?
I'm gonna try my best.
Okay.
That's all I can give you.
Okay.
Because it took, I mean, it took money. I'm doing this by myself, and I got other people's names on the property.
Right.
So you're looking at the goat.
Okay, well, I don't know if you're selling the wood. Is it cypress?
I'd give you that.
Is the wood cypress?
I don't care about the wood.
No, 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 that's not my.
If it was cypress, it'd been gone, right?
Okay, all right. So I'm just trying to figure out, because I know people will sell it, or people want cypress.
They'll come get it at night.
Yeah.
It don't make no difference.
Okay.
If it was cypress like that.
Yeah.
You know, maybe look at it now.
Okay, well, we'll revisit, my recommendation to the council is that we revisit this one on August 2nd.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. I have a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Can I have your name, just my notes?
Yes, Benny Miller, B.N.N.I.E.
Thank you.
Miller, thank Miller beer, but I'm finna go drink. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, thank you, sir. I, I know, man, I know. Quit tempting me. Okay, so we don't, we have a motion and a second, uh, please vote your machines.
Uh, it's already.
Already done, okay. Man, y'all were ahead of the game. Thank y'all very much.
No, we didn't vote. We hadn't voted.
Y'all did.
It was just, yeah, it's from last.
Please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Mr. Miller's cracking one in the, no. All right, next one, seven eight.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 801 School Street, District 5, in action, Resolution 22-140.
Is there anyone here to represent this property? Yes, ma'am, hi.
Hi.
Come on up and please state your name.
Okay, my family's here, but I'm just the spokesperson.
Oh, that's fine.
My name is Frentiel Dominic Gatlin. So I'm the one that called.
Okay, all right, I got.
That you all mentioned in the last meeting.
Okay, alright, well, thank you for coming. Uh, Jimmy, what do we have on this one?
Well, let's see what they wanna do, 'cause when I talked to her, they were talking about tearing it down themselves.
Okay, well, then, uh, please tell us your plans.
Okay, so we have decided to demolish the property, but I wanted to clarify, it's a property facing 613 Ann Street, which is this one. So it is the one facing Ann, that is it.
That is it, that's it.
Right. So we've already obtained a permit to demolish on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And we're anticipating, anticipating completion no later than August first. Weather permitting, since you all get a whole lot of hurricanes.
Rain and everything else. Good.
And rain.
Okay, so this is also my district. And, um, thank you guys, 'cause this has been one that I get a lot of complaints about, and so we're glad that you're going to take it down. I would say that my recommendation would be that we revisit this on August second. So that we give the family ti, enough time to kinda tear it down and, you know, get rid of the stuff on the, on the lot, so...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today.
Okay.
A motion by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, the only thing they live, they grew up in my district, District Two, Lombard Street.
And you came from Florida to help with this?
Absolutely.
You gotta do a commercial for me too, man, anyway.
Their mother was my home ec teacher. Beautiful lady.
Yes, my family's here, so...
Okay, any other discussion, then please vote your machines. And I can't thank you all enough, again, this is what we want to happen, this is, you know, the...
I have one little question.
Sure.
He's been, like, so helpful.
Okay.
But, um...
Under the commercial.
Jimmy?
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give that credit to my secretary.
He really has.
She has.
But I just wanted to know, like, what's the process for notifying individuals of matters like this? Would you guys, like, be able to provide that for me in writing?
Uh...
Notifying...
How many search?
It, it, the way we do it is through the assessors' office. Whoever's on the assessment for that property, that's who we notify. And then our attorney researches, and if there's any extra individuals that we need to notify, we notify them too. But the only one I had on this one was, I think we had several. Angie Dupas?
Okay, 'cause she was kind enough to inform me, which I told him, I'm coming down. I will be down there.
Yeah.
So I am here. But, um, yeah, we were just, I was just wondering, 'cause when I did reach out to his office, I said, here's my phone number, my, just before the meeting, that's why he commented on it. And then I think, um, we were informed that it was put in the newspaper, someone just said, hey, they wanna know about your estate, and I'm like, no, I already reached out to them.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Yeah, well, we have to, we have to do a whole lot of legal steps to make sure, 'cause this, like I said, this is dr, this is the most drastic thing government can do, is come and say we're tearing down a piece of property. So we have a lot of steps we have to follow, and that's one of them.
We, we mail to people we have good addresses for who live here. And then for people who live other places, we have an appointed attorney who runs an ad in the paper, and will send a letter to the last known address, but also runs an ad in the paper, anybody knowing the whereabouts of, so on and so forth. So, that could've turned it up.
I reached out to him, he never called me back. I was trying to tell him, I already reached out to Liz, like, I've spoken to her. So he did email me and said, okay, you've been notified of the meeting. So I said, what time is the meeting? Where's the meet, like, I had to keep reaching out. So I was just, I was just curious, but thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you all, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, but we need to vote before we start thanking everybody.
Bye.
We voted.
We voted?
No.
No?
Vote on this?
We didn't vote on this one, did we?
No, not yet.
We better get together on it.
No, we didn't. So, any other questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I have so many.
Please vote your machines. Now we voted.
Yeah. And we're voting to revisit on August second.
Yes. And it's tough to keep up when we have, the more comments you have and the more discussion, so, anyway, keep it straight. It's all good stuff. Seven I.
Revisit the state of buildings located at 1214 St. Jude Avenue, District Two, in action. Resolution twenty-two dash one forty-one.
Is there anybody here to represent this property?
No, she called me.
Nobody here, okay.
No, her husband fractured his ankle. But they've been in the process of demolishing it. It's just gotten a little slow.
Well, he broke his ankle, so...
Yeah, well, they're waiting on another dumpster, they're getting another dumpster. They had finished loading, and they had done more than after Tuesday when I took the pictures.
Okay, good.
So they've done some more. But, uh...
Good.
They, we need to revisit August the second.
It's District Two.
My district.
Yes.
Make a motion to revisit August the second.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Martin Lewis, and, uh, the mayor pro tem, Ricky Gonson, I had already said.
Okay, cool.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, is there any other discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Ooh, the one we're looking for, the last one.
Yes.
Seven J.
She has a question we can ask.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, alright, come on, one more question, yes, ma'am?
I just forgot one thing.
It's okay.
I'm so, so sorry. Is it okay, since I'm in Florida, just to email you all the pictures saying, look, everything's demolished, everything's clean?
I'll be checking on it.
Sure.
Yeah, so will I.
Between the councilperson and Jimmy, and myself, and, you know, we all, we all around town all the time, but yeah, that would be, that would be fine.
Okay, 'cause I teach school, so once school starts again, they're not gonna let me off.
I understand.
Now, are we gonna need her to come back at all, or no? Is she good?
No, she doesn't have to come back.
As long as she takes care of what she says she's gonna take up.
Yeah, we're good.
When August second comes up, I'll go do a picture, just like we do here.
And we'll just say it's done, and we'll, you know?
And then we'll remove it.
And we'll remove it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good trip. Okay, we're on seven J. Anybody here for this property?
Which is five ten West St. Peter Street?
Yes. No one's here?
Okay.
Uh, Jimmy?
Alright, on the inspection report. The roof has holes, holes. Maintenance is horrible. Plumbing, electrical, all need to be repaired. We serviced, I think, three times. We got one letter back unclaimed from May the twentieth. May the thirty-first, this has not come back, and we did another one on June the thirteenth. That hasn't come back yet.
And we did a grass notice, too.
And we did a grass notice today. Today? Yeah.
Okay, so this is another one in my district.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can tell you that we've had, we've received several complaints, Brooke gets complaints also. Uh, she passes them along to me. I've gone in the area, that place is a jungle. There is, um, homeless people going in and out of there, it's very unsafe. There's animals in the yard, there's no door on the front, there's windows that are missing. It is a very unsafe structure. And so, um, this has been going on since before I took over this seat. My recommendation to the council is that we demolish. And it's also, people can't even see sometimes when they're trying to turn, it's a traffic hazard, so... Um, I would say that we, I, I recommend we, we vote to demolish this property.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, and I have a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? No. That's not our house. Is there any other comment or question?
And, and Jimmy doesn't disagree, right?
Nope.
One question, and I think Ms. Ledbetter brought it up, about all of the jungle around it, will that come down as well?
Well, if you tear the house down, you're gonna end up knocking...
Yes, right, you answered that last time.
You answered it last time, it's, it's in such bad shape to get some equipment in, it's gonna...
You got to tear it down.
It's gonna go in the house, basically.
There's a pecan tree...
It's kinda grown in the house.
There is a pecan tree that's down.
Okay.
So, when he goes in, he's gonna have to go... If he comes in on Corrine Street where the gate's down, he'll have to go straight to the back with his excavator. He'll have to put the box in the gate and drag it back to him. He'll have to pick up the tree and put that in the...
Dumpster.
In the dumpster. Then when he moves around to knock the house down, well, you only, you can only imagine what's gonna happen to the...
Yeah.
Overgrowth.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments, questions? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much.
Did we ever put any rat poison around, anything like that, before we demolish our house?
No.
We've never done that.
You said, uh, rat, red cage?
Some sort of...
I'm just wondering what we got living in there.
Wow.
Yeah, neighbors are gonna be like, wow. That's the one with the four-foot raccoon.
The house is gonna have to get ready.
They may need to set some traps around their house.
Yeah, I'm serious.
Don't they say there's a four-foot raccoon there?
Yeah, that's where the, the man said the raccoon was four foot high, you remember? I can't believe that, but...
Tapped him on his shoulder.
Yeah, tapped him on his shoulder. He was pretty funny.
I think that was that house.
Okay, now we move on to item eight, councilman's remarks, I'll start on this side tonight. Okay. Why not?
Why not, uh... Yeah, well, great meeting. I like the fact that we had some come forward, and with good, with good things, and showing the community what good can happen if they do their end of the deal. I'm not in the business of demolishing houses either, but, and I wanna just, for the record, I, I didn't take it personal what was going on, it just, it's been a recurring thing that's been happening over and over, and I just, you know, just thought, hey, I think we need just need to go along with our, what our plan is from the get-go, and that's, you know, clean up the town. And, uh, I just wanna let everybody know that, so, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, so, I agree, it was a good meeting, and we got a lot of stuff accomplished, and it was really exciting to hear about the, um, the stuff that we can do for the speeding and the school zones. Two announcements, on July ninth, we are gonna be looking for ten kids, ages thirteen to eighteen, to come out and learn how to kayak or canoe on the bayou. So, um, if you have a child, or a teenager, I should say, who's interested in learning how to kayak or canoe, we're gonna be using our new kayak deck, dock over there, um, you know, we're gonna be teaching them how to do that. So, you can text me at four oh four eight three one two nine eight eight. And we're gonna take the first ten kids that sign up, and then we'll create a waitlist for the others, and we'll come up with another date to teach another group. So we hope that we have good participation. And we're gonna start at eight in the morning, 'cause it's just extremely hot. And everything's free, and all they have to do is wear some old clothes. We'll have life jackets and everything, so, there'll be a lesson on how to do it. Yes, yes, we do. We're gonna be working with the test group, and so they're going to...
They told me they were willing to do some of those things.
Yeah, so I hit 'em up, and so they said they would do it. And, uh, they're gonna teach the kids how to paddle and everything before we go in the water, but, um, we don't expect any kid to fall in the water, but they will have life ja, life jackets and everything on. So we're gonna be very secure, uh, make sure that the kids are safe and that they enjoy this experience. Because one day, we hope that we're gonna have, uh, a kayak company that rents out kayaks to the people in the community, so if you don't own one, you can still go out, rent one, and have a nice afternoon on the bayou.
Already talking to a couple.
Awesome.
That's what happens when, you know, I think when we get Felicity's Landing, we're gonna end up with a tour boat. But I think the kayak dock is spurring interest, and I've already had two people reach out, and, uh, we have a guy who's doing tours in Franklin, and I have a meeting with him tomorrow, actually, about exactly that.
Excellent.
Uh, so, you know, sometimes you gotta build it and have some faith that it's gonna work out, but this is one, and I see that it's being used now, so...
Yeah.
It's a good thing, and I think the more that we get kids involved, the more we start with people while they're young, and show them as an oppo, and the more opportunities we have as a city, the more those things are gonna take off, you know?
Absolutely.
You gotta plant this, you gotta plant the tree, you gotta plant the seed for the tree to grow, you know?
Absolutely, so that's why we're gonna go thirteen to eighteen, and then later on, we'll do a younger group, but for right now, we wanna get the teenagers involved, because they'll be more likely the ones that might go out on the bayou afterwards, go rent a kayak and then paddle down there. They'll have a lot of fun with that. Second is that the downtown neighborhood association will be on Ann Street and some of the, um, side streets. This Saturday from nine to eleven, we will be talking with homeowners about some of the repairs that they have. You know, we, we are a small group that can only do some minor things, but where we can help senior citizens out, we want to, um, get their names and, um, and find out what the issues are, and see how we can help to improve the community. So that's this Saturday from nine to eleven. That's it.
Thank you.
I just wanna...
Four oh four eight three one two nine eight eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanna, um, thank everybody who, who came out, who attended, who participated in all the Juneteenth celebrations that took place from Thursday all the way to Saturday and Sunday.[1498.51]